She visits this summer. We don't have some of our other oral recognitions and celebrations, so we'll be right to our communications with staff guests and district residents in our public comments section. Staff guests and district residents may address the board of education or communications with staff guests and district residents portion of the agenda listed below. Please also be informed that these comments are limited to three minutes per individual. And because we have a number of people, I will try and hold to that. Sometimes we'll be more flexible, but I want to try to stick to that as much as possible. Thank you. And please conduct yourself. Those are all reports. Others during your comments. Thank you. First up is Billy McKinney.
Good evening, everyone. I think that's it. Thank you very much. Just have to be smarter than the mic. My name is Billy McKinney. I am a resident of the city of Zion. I am also the mayor. I am here this evening to address the board, Dr. Rodriguez, about comments that were made by your board member Kathy Champagne at the last board meeting. And the comments that she made was that the city of Zion and the administration was not transparent, sneaky, behind-the-scenes, underhanded, and not professional. Now, I have a great deal of regard for Ms. Champagne. We worked together and talked about a lot of things to improve our community. And I always respect her opinion about things, but I thought those comments were biased, and I thought they were irresponsible. And here's why. For the last 10 years in this city, since I've been part of the fabric of the city council, we've worked hard to be transparent, to restore faith from our residents about local government. The comments weren't specific as to what we were underhanded and sneaky about, but I can only surmise it was about the reallocation of the CEGIA money in which the city of Zion worked so hard to get $15 million a year for the next now 22 years for the residents here. That money, as we worked on that plan, what we did as a city and being a good community partner was to include all of the taxing bodies in that with the thought and process being that we would lower the burden on our tax residents. That was it. The comments, while I might have appeared passionate and a little angry at the city council meeting, it was a slap on the face to everyone that I worked with. Some of those people are here this evening. Our city administrator, who came up, Dave Nabel, came up with the plan because the federal efforts weren't going anywhere. It's dumb, but I try to take my ego out of it, but I'm always going to do what I can to protect the people that I work with. In the effort we made to make this community improve, the school boards are part of our community. It's not just the city of Zion. My reaction to Dr. Rodriguez and the comments I made are very clear for what I had to say. A couple of years ago, we stood in one part of the building, and we talked about collaboration and teamwork and what that meant. And when the Zion Leaders Group was formed, and I can remember those comments like they were yesterday, we said, "There's no more finger pointing or throwing each other under the bus."
I'm sorry, I failed to give you a heads up, but the time is up. But please finish your comments.
I will finish. I'll be brief. I felt like we were thrown under the bus. If that would have been you at one of our city council meetings, what I would have done, or what our city administrator would have done, is we would have corrected the error in the comments. I've heard nothing from you since then. For me and the people I work with, that was a big breach of trust. And you can't be a teammate sometimes. You have to be a teammate all the time. It's a karma that was knocked over. We haven't talked since that point. And I'll be brief here. I'll finish my comments, Mr. Northstrom. But that hurt. And I don't judge people by their actions. And I was angry with you for a little bit, but I was angry with me probably more because of one thing. We welcomed you into this community. Every bit of communication that we had has been accessible to you. We treated you like a partner. In creating this legislation with Rep. Joyce Mason, we included schools and the other taxing bodies to be considered a partner. So it's my hope that as we can move past this, but I was tremendously disappointed in your actions and not sticking up for people that have fought for you in this community. Thank you, Mr. Northstrom.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up is Dave Nabel. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody. For those who know me, good to see you again. For those who don't, I'm the city administrator for the city of Zion. Proud ZB class of '94 as well. But I want to make sure that I address some of the misinformation that's been out there. For those who don't know, the... All the taxing bodies that have been working on legislation related to the nuclear fuel This was an effort started 12 and a half years ago when I made and with, at the time, Mayor Hill in conjunction with all the other taxing bodies. There was an intergovernmental agreement between us and the taxing bodies on how to allocate those federal funds should we ever get it, and that we were jointly paying towards that effort. I bring this up because I've had a lot of staff members, a lot of other board members, that have said, "We've been paying towards this. We've been working towards this." That's the federal. That has... We've been... I have regular meetings with Duckworth's staff, with our federal legislators, trying to come up with ideas. We're still pushing on that. But three years ago, when there was talk of a bailout for combat at a state level, the city of Zion pushed the idea, saying, "Don't forget about us before you give them a bailout." And it was a hail mary. People said, "Let her get it done. It won't happen." But we pushed for that with Representative Mason at the time, Representative Yingling, and we sat in the mayor's office, myself, the mayor, and the two reps to draft this legislation, to come up with the idea, to pitch the problems. And I went to the group and I said, "Hold on. We might have something right here." And we continued that effort. There was no funds going for that. There was no work asked by other taxing bodies. As the mayor said, we wanted to make sure everyone was in the legislation with the intent to reduce taxes. There have been comments that have come to me, questions come to me, saying, "Mixing up the two." Those are separate. I want to make sure that's understood. Additionally, there is the importance of information completeness. What's presented, the... One of the points I made at the council meeting was the resolution that was on the last meeting on the reallocation. Talks about the reallocation where the city's getting 60% from up to 15%. But there was nothing in there about the communication or the intent that entirety of that increase would be abating. And we would all do an intergovernmental agreement. We would all allocate, we'd try and get the taxing, the tax bill to reflect everyone's contribution to that. Now, that was... And that may have been discussed with some of the board members of my staff, that that was not the resolution. And I had residents and other people contact me saying, "Is that true? Are you ready?" And I said, "Well, what was presented was true on the percentages, but it wasn't the complete story." The abatement piece was not included. Once that was explained, I went, "Oh, that's different." So when you present information to the public, it's not transparent to present part of the information. It creates a bad image when you're withholding information and you're not telling the whole story. I've been working on this for 12 years with federal legislators. National nuclear panels I've presented on. I know this stuff inside out, and I have never had a board member come and ask me to verify any questions or any information that they had. I am always available. Please, if you have a question, reach out to me. I think that's the biggest frustration about this, is that a lot could have been avoided with a call or a question to address the information and make sure it was accurate. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Mason.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for having me here, Representative Joyce Mason. In 2021, I co-sponsored and helped cast state legislation known as CEGIA, Clean Energy Job Sant that takes steps to address our climate crisis, move to 100% renewable energy, create good-paying, clean energy jobs, and bring employment training and opportunities to communities like ours, those who have been affected financially by environmental pollution of big energy companies. As this legislation was being drafted, I saw the rare opportunity that we had discussed to help repair the damage to our community that was caused by the decommissioned nuclear power plant that sits on our shores. We worked hard to negotiate language in this bill that would guarantee the Zion community funding and, most importantly, property tax relief for residents and businesses that have been buried for so long, trying to make up the funds that were lost with the closing of the plan to hold up the community and indeed these schools that were suddenly in dire need. I consider the language that I negotiated into this legislation to be my greatest achievement in the five years I've been serving because I know how much people in our community are hurting. I hear from people every single day who are losing their homes, who can no longer afford to pay their rent, who are making impossible choices between mortgage or rent payments, groceries, medication, medical care, school supplies, car repairs, and other basic needs. Recently, there have been a great many statements, a letter, and a newspaper regarding this money. And as the person who authored this section of the legislation that is bringing this funding in and as the person who passed this legislation for our community, I need to make some facts clear. Number one, this money is state legislation that state legislators passed. Two, when drafting this legislation, the legislative intent from day one was and always has been to first provide substantial property tax relief to the people of our community to ease their burden and then to provide additional funds to our taxing bodies. Three, it is up to the state legislature and no one else to determine where this money will be allocated. It is not up to any taxing body, and it is not up for negotiation or debate. The plan to provide property tax relief has been public from day one. In the press release that I issued in 2021, the heading is "Mason Secures Property Tax Relief and Decarbonization with Clean Energy Bill." Since 2021, in meetings with all stakeholders, the legislative intent was made clear and thoroughly discussed. And anyone who tells you differently, who is in those meetings, is not being honest with you. As a former school board member, I would find that very concerning if I were you. Let me be completely clear. As an educator, as the proud mom of a teacher in this community, the sister of a teacher, the former vice president of the Woodland School Board, a member of the House K-12 Elementary Education Curriculum and Policies Committee, and the chairperson of the Childcare Accessibility and Early Childhood Education Committee, I am and always have been committed to providing the best education to the kids here. I fully understand the gaps that exist and those that don't. I was advocating for the evidence-based funding formula that brings schools more money from the state before ever dreaming of running for state representative. And in Springfield, I have been spent... I have spent considerable time advocating for additional money to be spent in our budget to go to K-12 education. This year, we added $350 million additional dollars. I have provided this school and other schools in our community with capital funds, with extra money from the budget. I have provided nearly every student, probably, with school supplies because their families can't afford it. In addition, I've provided funding for schools, for parks, for playgrounds, roads, municipal buildings, public safety initiatives, safety equipment, and the lakefront and Illinois Beach State Park. The residents of our community have a great many needs, and the intent of the legislation that was passed by the state can and will provide significant property tax relief to our community and infuse additional funding to our schools and other taxing bodies. In doing so, our community will be a place where families can afford to live, to learn, to recreate, and to do business and open businesses along with more support for our first responders who protect us. We are on our way to better days in this community because we took all of that into consideration when we very carefully crafted this legislation. If people have questions about this state legislation and its intent, I am very happy to discuss them with those who want to have a respectful dialogue. But what I won't accept and what has been happening are lies, half-truths, name-calling, public rants by people who have not been given the full information, and I won't accept unwarranted attacks on our Zion officials who worked so hard, day in and day out, for our community. They deserve better, and the people of our community deserve better than what's been happening here. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make sure Representative, especially because of her background and involvement in this, had some extra time. But for the rest of the speakers, please try and stay as you can to the three minutes. Larry Stevens.
Good evening. As all of you know, my name is Larry Stevens, and I'm a member of the community and have been most of my life. As most of you know, I've been to most of these meetings over the last several months and have watched with interest things that are going on. And I think it's no secret to anybody that you've got a lot of interest out here and a lot of people concerned about what's happening here in Zion Bennett. In tonight's agenda, there are several items in here that are part of the consent agenda. Out of all of those things, we're going to spend a lot more money tonight. And I bet you I don't hear one question from anybody on the board. I don't hear anybody asking why we're doing this, what we're doing it for, or why is it necessary. Later tonight, we've got a public hearing regarding the amended budgets. And I'm hoping that we're going to be allowed to talk at that time and ask some questions and get some answers about things that are concerning the entire community. This board has been very reluctant, I guess is a good word, to ask questions, to even demand answers. You guys are where the problem starts or where the correction starts. Everybody works for you. And up here, I see on the board, "Welcome to tonight's school board being presented by Superintendent Jesse Rodriguez." How does that work? You guys are the boss. You should be making the decisions. And I expect to hear some questions and answers tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome, Mr. Northstrom and the board, the state board. My name is Roger Webb, or ZB class of 1971. I've been a business owner here for 53 years in the Zion area. I've spent almost 71 years here in this area. As I toured this school recently, I was appalled by it by a member, and the physicality of this place has really changed and great job. It looks very nice. I marvel at the physicality of this place. The board's certainly... Well, the board, pretty good board. I'm sure you guys have met your wad on this. All this new construction, a lot of it without any referendum, which I don't understand at all. So we thought the calendar was coming in the form of tax relief, the new money that's coming in from the energy hill, only to have Zion High School renegotiate this agreement. It kind of lit a fire under me, too. The agreement, the city name with the taxing bodies, is something that we can't hold lightly. My personal business has lost, rather than we do defer to leaving Zion due to the oppressive limits and the taxes. Grand Appliance was one of my big accounts. They went to Stereum, as Mark, rest in peace, told me, "In 10 years' time, you'll save $1.5 billion going to Stereum versus Zion." But we lost Keifer Sports Group to Bloomington, Illinois, to the cheaper Dill Brothers. She said in my office, Gaye Dill, when her father passed away, crying with her mayor, saying she couldn't pay her $72,000 tax right that she had. And I'm thinking, "How many anybody does today pay $72,000 and still ain't a pro?" We also lost Midway Supply, VAT, American Air Filter, Circle Concrete, Tomlin Tiger. Many of them just couldn't justify the tax right. So with Zion enjoying the highest tax rate, it's really put the city of Zion in a catch-22, trying to attract new people, new businesses. Mayor Bill and Dave Nabel made a pitch for Niagara Water Company, and they said themselves, that it was the best pitch that they had received from any municipality, only to have them enter over the state line. You go up H, you go up Kilborn Road, you'll see with Niagara Water out there. And it served a good night to have them as a neighbor, as a customer. You go up to Pleasant Prairie, you see all the trains, cement trucks, and so forth, and all the new construction. We could have some of that. Joyce, we should have some of that, but we don't. We have a lady called me... Lady of the name of, she's 83 years old. She's like, "What old?" And she's trying to turn in her life insurance policy so she can pay her taxes. And I think, "Jesus, Louise, this poor lady. If it was up to me, she wouldn't be paying any taxes at 83 years old." She's trying to live in her house. She's not going to pay those things in her house. I've lost two customers just within the last month. Bill Hartman, you guys know Bill Hartman, good guy in the Park District Board, moved to Tennessee, his tax over 1/4 of the way is paying here. Dr. Steve Thompson, leaving, going to Tennessee. Certainly can afford his taxes. If we're up to these, paying school levies, and it's the rates that we're paying right now, something's got to be done. We thought there was going to be some relief. I would like to see the board act on that and then give us a break. And if you guys agree to it, you're not the only game in town. There's other people here involved as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak today. I know that I... What I'm going to speak about is John F. Kennedy compared to what's being said tonight. But for those of you who don't know, I'm Cory Zane. I've been here to allocate for extending the provision of food to all summer school students, not just the freshman focus group. For those of you who don't know, freshman focus is grant-funded, and part of that money is used to buy food in the form of a meal bag. A meal bag usually consists of a cereal box, fruit, such as an orange or dried cranberries, and cheese. The students also get a juice to accompany their bag, and they're there from eight to noon. While summer school students are here from 7:30 in the morning to 12:30 in the afternoon, and they don't get any district providing food. Some of those kids catch a bus as early as 6:55 in the morning to get to school. Math remediation students have class in front of the food that is offered to the freshman, and all the other classes have been passed by that same cart of food to get a promo from the IMC. Those conversations with students asked for food, but we have to tell them that it isn't for them, are heartbreaking. And that's what I'm here to say. We used to feed our summer school students in the past. When I questioned why we stopped, I was informed that the district was throwing away more food than it was giving out. There must be a way to mitigate costs while still feeding hungry kids. A simple, quick suggestion includes making few meal bags each day till we find the ideal number needed. Depriving hungry students of food strictly because we don't want to waste money only for students who actually need food. I personally spent over $100 of my money just for session one, which ended yesterday, and I'm not the only teacher doing this. Talking to summer school teachers, almost every single one of them has spent at least some sort of money on food for kids in the building for the summer. We should not rely on teachers to spend their hard-earned money to feed students when the district has the duty of doing so. We all know that equitable access to nutritious meals is fundamental for every student's ability to succeed academically and personally. Many of our students rely on school-based meals during their regular school year, and this need does not diminish over the summer. If anything, it increases during this time by ensuring that our summer school students have access to food or supporting their physical health, which also directly impacts their capacity to learn and engage in their studies. Summer school often caters to students who are already facing academic challenges. These students need additional support, not only in terms of education, but also in terms of basic needs, which removes one significant barrier to their success, allowing them to focus more on their studies and less where their next meal is coming from. To sum up, providing meals for all summer school students is an investment in their health, academic success, and overall well-being. It aligns with our mission for educational excellence, which is constantly being preached at us. I urge you to fuel that excellence by taking steps towards making equitable meal provisions for the district and not by the teachers, for a reality for all of our summer school students. Thank you.
Thank you for talking about that. I'll make sure we talk about it. The administration might be reaching out, too. I apologize if I didn't get the right last name correctly. Mike Beck. Can I pronounce that correctly, sir?
Yes. Very well down the business of my government. So my name is Michael Beck. I used to run the Zion Bennett News. I was the owner of the Zion Bennett Times. I ran the Zion Chamber for a long time. 12 and a half years ago, I was fortunate enough to be part of a committee to work on getting funding from the federal government, working with Brad Schiner and Senator Duckworth. So it's very dear to my heart. Our goal was always to reduce taxes. All of the different participants from the school board and the different government entities were always planning on reducing taxes. All of our feasibility studies, everything that we did, looked at reducing taxes to growth taxes so that we would have economic development, residential development, so that people would want to move into this area. I own the last bays of Cypress Park subdivision. There's no chance of getting it developed in this area. Cannot be done. It's not economically feasible. Nobody wants to pay these taxes. Nobody wants to come to our schools based on our ratings. We need to take a hard look at that. I would encourage this board to look at what's happened recently. Again, that was Mr. Hill's administration that put me on that board, but I also worked hand-to-hand with Mr. McKinney's administration and David Nabel and Son Alito Brunson, who have incredibly difficult jobs. We are very underfunded. While the school is building state-of-the-art facilities, we're trying to figure out how we're going to keep enough police on the street to make sure crime stays down. Mr. McKinney always talks about breaking down silos and working together. He's done that again when he came up here, extending a hand to a gentleman called him sneaky, underhanded, and not transparent. Now, I'll tell you, the city had to decide to not advertise it on newspapers because they had tough taxes. Was I happy with their decision? Did I disagree with what they should do? Yes. Were they sneaky, underhanded, not transparent? No. The city helped fund the Chingam Grove Commerce. As the businesses left and the taxes were not coming in, did they decide to not be able to do that? They did decide not to do that. Were they sneaky, underhanded, and not transparent? No. They were making very tough decisions. And again, I got to credit Mr. McKinney, Mayor McKinney, for coming up here and extending a hand to a gentleman who should apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As members of our community, we recognize the critical role you play in shaping the future of our children and the overall well-being of our community. I'd like to highlight the board's responsibilities, but I think they are. Their impact in our region and address an important issue concerning transparency. our region, and address an important issue concerning transparency. Some of the responsibilities I'm going to read off are found on the website IASB.com. First, representation. You represent the entire community, students, parents, teachers, administrators, staff, homeowners, renters, taxpayers, local businesses, and even future residents. Your decisions should reflect the diverse needs and aspirations of all these groups. Rule adoption and enforcement. You adopt and enforce rules for managing and governing this school district, ensuring a structured and safe learning environment for our children. Monitoring performance. You should be rigorously reviewing the district's performance, including academic achievements and financial health. Taking responsibility. You have to hold yourselves accountable for the board's actions and decisions. Continuous self-evaluation and professional development help maintain high standards of governance. The superintendent employment, employing and evaluating the superintendent is a primary, primary responsibility. A strong partnership between the board and superintendent is vital for the district's success. Support the superintendent's recommendations and monitor their performance to ensure alignment with the district's goals that you have set. Delegation to the superintendent should ensure directives are clearly understood and implemented. This allows efficient administration while keeping the board focused on strategic oversight. Decision-making. Decisions are made collectively by majority vote or legally called school board meetings, ensuring transparency and accountability. Now, I'm going to address some transparency issues. The school board and superintendent have accused the city of not being transparent in negotiations regarding the delegation of tax rebates. The city has vigorously disputed these accusations. While I don't claim to know all the facts, I find it somewhat ironic to question the city's transparency, but the school board itself is still not publishing videos of its meetings online. Still, transparency is a fundamental aspect of good governance and should be upheld by all parties. Ensuring that school board meetings are accessible to the public through online videos would be a significant step towards greater transparency and accountability. By fulfilling your responsibilities and addressing these transparency issues, you not only ensure the smooth operation of our schools, but also contribute to the overall health and prosperity of our community. Your work impacts the lives of thousands of students and their families in the ZB community, shaping the future of our society. In closing, I ask you to remember that you, as a school board, are accountable to the voters and residents of this area. While the superintendent is accountable to you, the school board, please don't forget this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, this is an opportunity to anybody from the public who had a question or comment regarding our pending action to amend the 2023 amendment for questions. Sure, come up here, circle four. Stephen.
Thank you. Can I just ask Dr. Wilkinson, property tax figures are a complicated issue. You're not dealing with them all the time. But I always tell, say, whenever you talk abatement or tax rate, be careful, because it's a very complicated issue. With, I believe you said the abatement was going to go from 1.9 to 1 million, correct? So you're still going to abate it. But it's a reduction of 900,000, which essentially is an increase over what was collected in prior year, 900,000. Correct? It's less than you could have collected. Correct. Through an abatement.
Right.
You're saying I could have collected this, but I did not through an abatement.
As long as we're keeping the tax rates going, there ain't no return.
Okay. And then the rate decrease as well is always a challenge to address, too, because during that same time period, property values increased 78%. The rate would have not dropped in half solely based on market value alone without doing anything. If you had kept your values exactly the same, it would have dropped half. So it's higher, and the city's on this, too. Our rate is down, but it's not because of reduced taxes. We're collecting more than we have. You're collecting more than you have. The rate is down due to market values increasing.
This year, because the CPI was 5%.
From the 2015 numbers they presented to now, market value in 2015 was one of the lowest of the best, but rate was the highest. Now, market value is at the top, and the rate goes down. It's an inverse proportional relationship. So talking rate reductions is, again, just part of the story. It's a good direction ahead. You want your rates going down, and, but I just, be careful talking abatements and rates without talking about actual extensions and levies and how much is being collected. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, David Cummins, I'm just a worshiper. Thank you for your color comment. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. I just want to clarify something in terms of the abatements you guys have been discussing or your superintendent has been discussing over the last few years, these abatements. So typically, when you talk about an abatement, say, we collect $1 million, and we are going to give money back to the taxpayers. So we give $100,000 to the taxpayers in abatement, and we keep $900,000. So, wow, that's great. This organization just abated money that they could have kept and could have used, but they gave it back to the taxpayers. Well, the abatements that you were discussing that have been happening over the last few years are not that scenario. They are property tax relief grants that came from the state. Yes, you had to apply for them, but that money is not money that was yours to keep. It was money that the state, based on legislation that I helped pass a number of years ago, provides some property tax money to abate, but it doesn't take anything out of what you've collected. So let's call apples apples and oranges oranges. You've got a state grant that is helping the taxpayers, but you are not giving up any money based on the goodness of your heart.
Anybody else?
Mr. Stevens. Hi, Larry Stevens again. I agree with what's being said by the people here, and listening to the stories here tonight is like watching a pea under a shell. We have to keep track of what's being said from one meeting to another. It changes from time to time. Now, independent of what you're saying about abating taxes and reducing things, you're asking for a $5.5 million increase this year. You went from $77 million to asking for $82 million this year. How is that helping our citizens in this community? That's almost 7% increase. As I look through here and see some of the things in your budget, you're taking monies from the education fund and putting them over into capital projects fund, you're putting them into operations and maintenance fund, you're putting them in building funds. You know, that money is intended for the education fund, not for the building fund, not for bricks and mortar, so for taking care of kids. You know, in the US News and World Report, which I pulled up, it indicates that there are 17,655 high schools in the United States. Zion Benton ranks 12,911 in that, the bottom 25%. Are you guys proud of that? Independent of the numbers you're putting up here, how can it possibly be true that 90% of our students want to go on further education when only 30% take the ACT? These numbers don't correlate, folks. You put numbers up here that are 13% proficiency in reading, 11% in mathematics, we have a 35% truancy rate, and still a 95% graduation rate. We can't be producing a good product. Independent of what you're saying up here and putting things on the board, it doesn't correlate. Those numbers that Dr. Wilkinson came up with as far as tax rates, those happen naturally. That's nothing the school does. The county assigns those. You're taking credit for something you're not doing.
Any other comments or? Anybody else?